What do you mean? It was me, I'm right here.
I didn't see your name, I'm sorry.
You need to have the camera on.
Sort of the uh, the policy states in order to speak at these meetings, you need to have the camera on.
There you go. So everybody's, everybody's in compliance that we can see. There we go, we can see you.
You can see me?
Yeah, no, yeah.
Oh. You're little baby.
Yeah, that's right. Alright, you ready, Mr. Manager? So we are gonna go right into our March twenty-seventh budget workshop. Um, we're gonna save the formalities when we start our regular meeting after this, as far as roll call and the pledge. So I can turn it right over to you, Mr. Manager, where we left off from last time.
Alright, so. Uh, brief overview of where we are and changes since last week's workshop. Moment. You know, I, I'm gonna start by answering the lingering question that we left with. In the day, Council Higgins posed the question, how much did we cut out of this before uh, pulling together all the expenses? So I went through and I did that calculation. Everything that was cut out of our FY twenty-five budget for funding by our administration owes four hundred twenty-three thousand four hundred fourteen. That is how much money we uh, cut back on. So, to make room for the necessary increases that, you know, most of which we don't have. You're welcome. So, you know, that, that, that proves, you know, our goal of really trimming that, if you will, uh, having a more realistic and fair approach to our budget for our taxpayers, uh, more so than, than I believe a thousand approach has been for quite some. So, moving into updates since last week. We did make the correction for expense line zero one zero one dash zero one zero one. Uh, that is the council stipend line. Making the correction to the totals and like needed to complete next year's ballot, that line has been cut down to two thousand six hundred dollars. Well, uh, five thousand four hundred that is remaining from budgeting for the potential of the stipend increase last year that failed to pass. Bringing that forward over the summer. Will complete the total that we need to pay the current stipends. The revenue line for Public Works Administration, uh, addressing the culture truck reimbursements has been increased to sixty thousand dollars as we decided last week. And likewise, the offset for that, the expense line of the wastewater culture truck, twenty-six hundred dash zero six one one wastewater action culture truck, that has been increased to sixty thousand dollars. So, that is a wash and now takes care of all, what is that roughly, eighty percent of the new staff salary? So, our new expense total in this draft is eight million two hundred eight thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars. Our new revenues in this draft are five million four hundred twenty-eight thousand nine hundred seventeen. Uh, when looking at the budget summary, that will show you uh, an overall decrease in our taxation ask of ten thousand three hundred thirty-two dollars. You know, I, I, I pay great pride in uh, not just by work on this, but the, the, the our team's work on, because this means that every year since I've been in this role, uh, we have decreased our tax ask on community in, in a more rational response to. I really appreciate. Yeah, so, any questions on the overview?
Make continue.
Alright, let's see, share with screens, we'll get into the departments while I do that, uh, tonight's uh, tonight's workshop in the correct order, um, will be elections and registrations, town clerks, community services, insurances, enforcement officials, dog constable, fringe benefits, debt and interest, general assistance, public health wellness, uh, airport operations, airport business, holiday observation and events, and
Very good.
So, page three in the back. Department zero one zero three, elections and registrations, we're looking at overall decrease due to, you know, the need for less staffing and supplies for FY twenty-six. An overly demanding year for actions and, you know, given the change that we put in place, usually closing the clerk's office on those days that having our clerk staff were at full So, overall decrease, nine hundred thirty-nine dollars, department total, ten thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars.
Very good.
Next is page four, department, zero one zero four, town clerks. Uh, the increases to this department are basically entirely related to uh, payroll and benefits. You know, as we've seen in, in other departments so far, that hospital insurance line was similar, you know. Get a lot better workers' compensation, uh, rates and expenses this year, but seems to have been mostly off. So, overall, you know, with every win comes um, the overall increase for that department is thirty-five thousand two hundred two dollars. Total is three hundred twenty-six thousand five hundred.
I see none.
Alright. Apartment tonight is page twenty-one, and that is maybe.
Yes, page twenty-one.
Oh, the page number and the page of file. Page twenty-one in that community services. Uh, this is where you will see our astronomical hydrant total. It is now over half a million dollars, uh, which is more than half of the uh, proposed purchase price when it was offered to the town years ago. We now pay that every year. System, it has increased this year by thirty thousand dollars. That is uh, our hydrants, you know, for fire and So, we are looking at increase overall there of twenty-nine thousand two hundred eighteen dollars. Total department. Six hundred twelve dollars, six hundred twelve thousand four hundred.
I see no question. Move on.
Uh, we are, that's a good page. Page twenty-three. That is our new rate for insurance. It has increased by eight thousand eight hundred thirty-seven dollars, bringing that total of one hundred twenty-eight thousand one hundred twenty-seven dollars. Really.
That's true.
Continue on. For now, uh, page twenty-five, zero two hundred three, enforcement about. We are seeing a, a decrease here entirely related to the workers' compensation, uh, new rate. So, decrease two hundred seventy-four dollars. Apartment total, ten thousand eight hundred eighty-six. Hold on. Moving on. Page twenty-six, dog constable. Also known as our control us. Who, uh, you know, the, the more I stick around here and the more I work with them and the more I understand what they do, uh, and really, you know, as I mentioned about you know, the, the need to consider transitioning and assassinating to full time, I, I really think that we need to consider at some point in the future making this a, either a larger stipend position you know, some sort of part-time or salaried type of position, uh, you know, that, that offer like that. Was far beyond. Please keep that in your mind, we may find, coach that. But, in this budget draft, we're looking at decreases, it's under ninety-four dollars, uh, that is basically due to the both the workers' compensation rate and moving the help online to the administrative apartment, so department costs fourteen thousand nine hundred eighty-two. Any questions concerns?
Counselor Jemay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mister, uh, manager, when you say that, is there a reason why don't make that happen on this fiscal calendar or if the need is that great? Um, like how far? How far are you away from the totals that you have here to being where you would like to be?
Um, well, the, the insurance package is, you know, twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars probably, uh, and increase in pay would be hopefully looking to you know, be fifty thousand dollars, I haven't done, now, fifty, sixty. I don't think that we're there. I don't think we have it worked out and planned for it to be able to work it in to this budget, but I think it's something we need to consider either later in year going in.
Can I ask you, how many hours are we on the average?
Um, it's, it, you know, it ebbs and flows quite a bit.
That's what I said on the average.
Yeah, uh, twenty, thirty hours usually.
So at this current, at the current rate that they work at, what is it comparable to? So it's not even minimum wage at this point?
I, I would say probably not, uh, but it's a stipend
I understand.
Position, so it's different, so, uh, and then on top of that, you know, above and beyond the you know, required duties of, of mission, you know, this person spends a lot of their own, but travel back and forth to, you know, human society, vet appointments, housing stray animals at their house until they have a place to go. You know, it's really so much more than what we've recognized over the years. Like I said, I don't think that the funding is necessarily there.
Well, my intent of asking these questions is not to get us there right now, it's if we could draw ourselves a little bit closer to help that line item be more comparable as a stepping stone to the next step, then, because I certainly don't want to see employees taking money out of their own pocket to to, I know that the town can reimburse them on, on some things um, through the warrant process, but certainly don't want to see employees, uh, be overworked and underpaid and have to take money out of their own pocket to suffice for their job.
So looking at the, looking at the difference right now between FY twenty-six you know, expenses total is different than taxation increase or de- but looking at a flat taxation that leaves a different.
Uh, Madam Chair, I would, I would like to propose that line item zero three five six for fiscal year twenty twenty-six be raised to fifteen thousand dollars.
So I would have you go ahead and, and make that adjustment and just so, let me back up, based on our, uh, procedure, we need a second for that?
Good.
Would you say? So we will go ahead and vote on this change, adding that line to fifteen thousand? So it's a, I'm gonna look at you, Madam Clerk, Clerk, can you just, yeah, for clarification, because this
Before you
Yeah, I don't think there's So the vote, the vote would just be to, we're not voting on the budget, we're just voting on adding it into for consideration to see what Yeah.
That is true, what I, what I want to point out is that increase in the one line will cause minor increases in really gotta believe that, they are minor, but just know it won't be an even five thousand.
Right.
Be a little addition.
Yeah, so I know in past processes, we've done that, we've all we've created an extra column, like, because it was requested for us to be able to look at that, you know, here's version A, version B, and what comes down to the budget hearings. Then we make the decision at that point, which one we're voting on, yeah. So we would like, so as a council, um, sort of as a, we would like to see what the numbers look like? Do I get a consensus on that? For adding five thousand dollars, fifty, did you just say?
Yes.
Increasing instead of ten?
Instead of ten, six oh eight?
Fifteen even.
Difference.
Go up to fifteen thousand? Do all the counselors understand that?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Pelletier. So I take that as direction.
In the next draft.
Any other questions in this particular expense?
See none, I'll move on. And is dividing terms zero, uh, this one is you know, often times got a new week target, uh, our approach was to look at a three-year. Um, and then this gets kind of dispersed through other departments as we move along, uh, but we have confidently set this at forty-four thousand one hundred thirty-seven dollars. Actually a decrease. Zero seven, zero, zero, debt. So this line, uh, or this department, uh, this is a this, this has a mix, it, so it has the expenses related to, uh, the debt taken on for our title to go, uh, which they, so, this total, uh, is off, you know, sixty thousand dollars, over sixty thousand dollars of this total is made up for the revenue side, debt and interest. Uh, and then it has, you know, our other current financed capital type purchases over the last couple of years, the fire truck, uh, power car. So that basically equivalent to the, the fire truck debt, uh, loan payment has an increase of forty thousand five hundred nine dollars. So, uh, on the seventy-seven thousand seven hundred thirteen.
We got a question?
Yes.
Um, the power cut lease. And I don't know if you can answer if it'd be chief, is that the same power cuts that they have trouble getting into some of the residential homes?
Yes. Those were those were, uh, say, four or five year lease two or three years ago? So yeah, that's not
Uh, just something that we'll probably should think about later.
Yeah, we should, you know, like I said, that's, that's, you know, that's a contract thing right now. Friendly.
Thank you.
Sure. Any questions, any other questions?
I see none.
Next up is low system, page three five. Zero eight. This is you know, again, well, this is, you know, needs base, um, we raise a certain amount of money, uh, seventy percent refund it, yes? Yeah, seventy, yes, seventy. Out of what is dispersed, seventy percent of that is reimbursed by so, so we're actually, we, we've gone and, you know, Lori has kind of identified some of the changing needs and altered some of the lines there, but it, it's actually the same, so
Yeah.
proposed budget is flat at seventeen thousand one hundred fifty dollars. And moving on. Page forty-six, public health. We are expecting the cost of the memorial day flags that we purchased for the cemetery, uh, cemetery that the American Legion uh, and local groups help, uh, disperse and take ownership of that. Uh, we are expecting that to increase by a small amount this year. So that's really the only change that we well. If that, you know. Oh, I was considering, I was thinking about your Um, there's another donation I'd be opposed to.
Yes, I know.
So, we're looking at an increase of five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars total for that apartment eleven. And
I don't see any questions.
Airborne stuff is uh, page fifty-four. So, overall here, you just reached some conagling on, on the differences line, um, a couple of increase, some decrease. Most of them are that we've worked respond in there. But represents overall decrease in part, six hundred seventy-five dollars for a total of two hundred one thousand seven hundred five.
Any question?
Next up is airport business, page fifty-five, eleven oh two. This entire department is, uh, This entire department is, uh. Products that are purchased and then sold. With the market. Uh, so it is also represented by revenue side at. Higher. Number. So. You know, I think very modestly, uh. It's left the same for most of the items, uh, we have. You know, seen. With the, with the change in one of the leases and at the new clientele. Our department now handles directly, uh, we've seen an increase in. Anyas items that are sold out there. Fuel filters and. Parts and pieces and that sort of thing. And so we've, we've expected an increase. For that, which is that. So we're only looking at a difference there of a thousand dollars. And so apartment of eighty six thousand six hundred.
Let's see any questions?
Age fifty six. Holiday observation and fits. Uh, we have. Proposed a decrease to the other town committees line. The, that was a. An introduction by the council to the budget, uh, last year. And you can see that, uh, three thousand dollars. Three hundred sixty seven dollars. So. I'm sure of the future intention of that line with the council. At this point in time, we've proposed a decrease of a thousand dollars. Uh, we do know speaking with. Uh, Tom and, and learning about some of the intentions of the age friendly committee. Uh, we expect some expenses to come out of there in the next few months before the end of the fiscal year. Uh, I'm sure of the total for those, but. We feel that two thousand dollars are very safe for the next year. Um, then we've boosted up the events committee line, uh, like five thousand dollars. Uh, expecting to. You know, so this coming fourth of July is, is the major, uh. Sterns Alumni Association, uh. Homecoming type event where they, you know, encourage all of the, uh, former graduates to come for a celebration. Uh, so we would like to. Be able to be more financially involved with that and. You know, it's not more and then understanding that following year is. Well, it's, uh, hundred and twenty fifth, uh, so we're expecting some pretty big celebration there. You know, many of those. Are, you know, a good portion of that budget is usually spent in one fiscal year. In preparation for events that happen. Two to four days into the next, so, uh, that's an odd long line, but we'd like to see that. Freeze. For the community that side of it. And so that's an overall increase, four thousand dollars. And overall, but twenty four.
Yeah, so Mr. Manager, I will just speak to that, um, the decrease on that line that usually goes to age friendly. Um, I'm fine with it based on, you know. Historical use of it, um, that it is low this year. I know we've been able to secure other funds and work through, um. Get other funding for some of the funds that we've done in collaboration with the fire department. And also we often worked with the events committee, so we're able to share expenses on things, so going for it, I'm fine with that. And as we revisit our action plan, it's time to create another three-year action plan for some of our work. We, we might look at that at another fiscal year, but I'm fine with that this year. Any other comment?
Right.
I see none there.
Our final department to review this evening. We did, uh, put this. A jet or schedule together was outstanding. So the, uh, at least one of these workshops falls out of the line of a broken council meeting, so we strategically put the easy stuff.
Yeah.
Uh, so the, the final department tonight is twelve oh one that county cap changed it's done. That's how it built. Do the county tax, uh, the cross county. It has increased by fifty four thousand nine hundred forty eight dollars. You know, like I said in a. In my original overview, uh, in. In three years that has increased by nearly a hundred and twenty thousand first last year forty. I was spoke. And our total bill to the county this year is four hundred thirteen thousand eighty six.
I see no questions on that.
Thank you. Uh, so we will re convene when the workshop on third to review the remaining departments. Uh, will they? Need to suggest a change from earlier, work out some new totals.
Very good, and like you said, remind everybody, we're back here for our workshop next Thursday. Thank you, Tom. I will, um, we'll come out of workshop. I do want a ten-minute break and then we will start our regular council meeting.
Actually, almost maximum.
Morning.
Ready?
And.
I'm bringing this regular town council meeting, March twenty seventh, to order. May I have a roll call, Madam Chair?
You may. Um, we have Councilor Bragden.
Excuse.
Thank you. Chair Danforth.
Here.
Councilor Jumeirah.
Here.
Councilor Hagan.
Here.
Councilor Mackin.
Here.
Council McGowan.
Here.
And Councilor Pollard here.
Present by Zoom.
Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. So we do have one adjustment to the agenda. We have an addition order number fifty one dash twenty twenty five. I'm seeking approval of minutes from March eighteenth, twenty twenty five executive session.
Salute.
Motion made by Council Dumei, seconded by Council McGowan. All those in favor of approval of the minutes, we need to take a roll call vote. Counselor Pelletier.
Aye.
Counselor Higgins.
Aye.
Counselor Mackin.
Hi, aye.
Counselor McGowan.
Aye.
Council Dumei.
Aye.
And Chair Danforth.
Aye.
Six zero. We have no unfinished business or special presentations. We do not have a manager's report. And we have, that will take us right into order number forty, which I will read as I was on the warrant committee. So providing for execution of the town warrant for March twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. It is ordered that the town warrant for March twenty seventh, twenty twenty five in the amount of one hundred and seventy one thousand. Two hundred dollars and seventy seven cents is hereby approved.
Second.
Motion made by Chair Dampf, seconded by Counselor McGowan. So I will let you know we have a few heavy hitters. So fifteen thousand seven hundred and twenty two dollars and fifteen cents, uh, Freightliner of Maine, and that was, uh, work on, uh, the public works, um. Um, pump truck. Some maintenance, um, Hoyle Tanner and Associates, thirty one thousand three hundred and six dollars and ninety cents. That's part of the, part of the runway construction design. Tax, oh, taxi. Okay, sorry. Thank you for the clarification. Um, six thousand dollars to Kataniary Television, and we, uh, we had missed a payment. We approved that order last meeting. Uh, hydrants, forty two thousand three hundred and sixty two dollars and thirty nine cents. For Main Water Company. Eight thousand six hundred and twenty one dollars and twelve cents municipal waste solutions, that's part of our disposal fees. Um. Four thousand three hundred dollars, PDQ Door Company, transfer station needed some new, uh, the compact station needed some new doors. Uh, five thousand three hundred and sixty two dollars and eighty five cents, Preble Oil Company. Uh, nine thousand seven and seven hundred and twenty dollars, Russell Johnson and Bopain Legal Services. Five thousand one hundred and three dollars and sixty five cents, CB Mar and Engineers, that's the Brownfield, Brownfield Assessment. Professional services. Um, for fourteen thousand three hundred and twenty six dollars and thirty five cents, Person Power. Any council comment on this order? Any public comment on this order? All right, back to the council for a vote. Counselor Pelletier.
Aye.
Counselor Higgins.
Aye.
Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Council Dumei.
Aye.
Council McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Danforth, aye, passes six zero. I get to read the next order as well. Order number forty one dash twenty twenty five, providing for execution of wastewater warrant for March twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. It is ordered that the wastewater warrant for March twenty seventh, twenty twenty five in the amount of three hundred and twenty thousand. Six hundred to two dollars and forty eight cents is hereby approved.
Second.
Motion made by Chair Dampf, seconded by Counselor McGowan. And I will share two or three heavy hitters here. Um. So twenty five thousand five hundred and ninety two dollars and eighteen cents. Over associates, that's main pump station upgrade. Uh, two hundred and fifty four thousand seventy six dollars and sixty five cents. T Buck Construction Incorporated, that's more, um, main pump station improvements, the fourth payment for that. Um. Sixteen thousand eleven dollars and ninety one cents, Person Power. And I'll go back up, there's a twenty thousand dollar page in Town of Millinocket, second quarter admin costs. Any council comment on this order? Any public comment on this order? Back to the council for a vote. Counselor Pelletier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor Higgins.
Aye.
Uh, Council Jumeirah.
Aye.
Council McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Danforth, aye, passes six zero. Okay. Counselor McGowan, can I have you read order number forty two?
Certainly, order number forty two dash twenty twenty five, providing for approval of reappointment to the Board of Appeals. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approves the reappointment of Michael Jewers. The Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire March twenty twenty eight. Note, Michael's term expires three twenty twenty five, and his application was received on three twenty 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 five. If approved, the board has one full seat available for full commitment.
Have a second. So motion made by Counselor McGowan, seconded by Counselor Higgins. Counsel comment on this order? Any public comment on this order?
If I may.
Yes.
Um, update for this order, there will. Um, other vacancy as we just received reservation, um. Dear.
Okay. So there will be two vacant seats.
There will be.
Okay.
One to fill his term and one to fill.
Full term. Thank you for the update. Any council comment on this order? Public comment on this order? Okay, back to the council for a vote. Uh, Counselor Pelletier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor Higgins.
Aye.
Uh, Council Dumei.
Aye.
Uh, Council McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Danforth, aye, the motion passes six zero. Counselor Pelletier, can I have you eat, read order number forty three?
Yes. Count, uh, order forty three dash twenty twenty five, providing for approval of an application for a victor's license for prep. Elizabeth MFP. It is ordered that the attached application for a victor's license is hereby approved for. Don Miller, Wyndham, Maine, doing business as great. Elizabeth MFP Ultimate Food Truck Extra, Extra. I'm pushed up.
Second.
Motion made, um, by Council Pelletier, seconded by Council McGowan. Any council comment on this order? Any public com, go ahead, Mr. Manager.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I am. Really just interested in. Counselor Dumeis.
Uh huh.
Thoughts on the name of.
The crepes part or the extra vaguans of.
Yeah.
The, like, crepe liz.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm. Waiting with baited bread.
There you go, sweet and savory crepes.
I love a good.
That's for you, yes. I'm very good, yeah. Any, um, public comment on this order? All right, see you none, we'll take it back, uh, to the council for a vote. Counselor Pelletier, how do you vote?
Aye.
What was that? Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
All right, um, Counselor Higgins.
Aye.
Counsel Dumei. And Council McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Danforth, aye, motion passes six zero. Where are we, um? Counsel Jumeirah, can I have you read order number forty four, please?
Absolutely, very clear. Order number forty four dash twenty twenty five, providing for approval of the application for victory license for. Hang Long Chinese Restaurant, it is ordered that the attached application for victory license is hereby approved. For Chang Shu Chang, Millinocket, Maine, doing business as. They're of Hang Long Yang Corporation, Hang Long Chinese Restaurant. Nine seven three Central Street, Millinocket.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Dumei, seconded by Counselor Higgins. Counsel comment on this order? Public comment on the order? Me and None will bring it back to the council for a vote. Counselor Pelletier.
Aye.
Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counsel Higgins.
Aye.
Counsel Dumei.
Aye.
Counsel McGowan.
Aye.
Uh, Chair Danforth, aye, passes six zero. Thank you for that. Uh, Counselor Higgins, can I have you read order number forty five?
Yes, Madam Chair. Order number forty five, twenty twenty five, providing for approval for an application for victory license. For Steve's Hot Dog Cart, MFC, it is ordered that the attached application for a victory license is hereby approved for Steve Moreau. Four six seven Penobscot Avenue, Maine, doing business at Steve's Hot Dog Cart, MFC, Veterans Memorial Park. Rough Cudders Wood Products by Golden Road, Illinois.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Higgins, seconded by Counselor McGowan. Any council comment on this order? Any public comment on the order? All right, being done, we will take a vote. Counselor Pelletier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor Higgins.
Aye.
Counsel Dumei.
Aye.
Counsel McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Danforth, aye, passes six zero. Counsel Mackin, can I have you read order number forty?
Order number forty six, twenty twenty five, providing for approval of an application. Of victory license for Yum Bake Shop, is ordered that the attached application. For the victory license is hereby approved for Maria Row. Millinock at Maine, doing business at Yum Bake Shop, two fifteen Penobscot Avenue, Millinock.
Second.
Uh, motion made by Counsel Mackin, seconded by. Uh, motion made by Counsel Mackin, seconded by Counselor Higgins. Counsel comment on this order?
Yep.
Um, public comment on the order? See you none. Back to the council for a vote. Counsel Pelletier, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor Higgins.
Aye.
Counsel Dumeay.
Aye.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Aye.
Chair Danforth, aye, it passes six zero. Counselor Pelletier, can I have you read order number forty-seven, dash twenty twenty-five?
Yes. Order forty-seven dash twenty twenty-five, providing for approval of donation to Millinocket Baseball and Softball Programs. Whereas the Millinocket Town Council has received donation requests from the Millinocket Little League and Sterns Junior Senior High School Baseball and Softball Programs. And whereas the council wishes to support these excellent programs with providing quality experiences for youth and families in our community, it is ordered that the Town, Millinocket Town Council approves the three donations requests listed below. It is further ordered that four thousand to be transferred from budget line zero one one five dash three seven seven eight to budget line zero eight one six four zero four three to complete the total of these donations. Millinocket Little League Green Thumb Service, one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy cents. Sterns Junior Senior High School Baseball and Softball, mound and plate covers, three thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and seventy-two cents. Outfield banner, two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-four cents.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor Higgins. Um, also comment on this order? Any council comment? No, I know, um, Counselor Bragden had sent me an email. He's, he's very much appreciative of, um, being able to find the funds to be able to do all this, and, um, if he was here, he would probably say a lot more, but just relaying that, and so I am appreciative that you have to, Mr. Manager, because this is very worthwhile, um, for our program, youth programs in our community. Um, any public comment on this order? All right, see you none. Well, back to the council for a vote. Counsel Pelletier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor Higgins.
Aye.
Counsel Dumeay.
Aye.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Aye.
Chair Danforth, aye. Motion passes six zero. Counselor Mackin, can I have you read order number forty-eight?
Order number forty-eight dash twenty twenty-five, providing for acceptance for Maine EMS Community Paramedicine Grant Funding. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council accepts this grant totaling thirty-four thousand dollars from the Maine EMS Community Pi- Paramedic Medicine Grant Program with a no funding match obligation to the town to be used by August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Note, these funds may be used for the following. EMS Education, EMT, AEMT, Paramedic, Community, Paramedicine. Continuing in Education, Specialty Courses, Certification Testing, Testing Costs, Travel and Training Equipment, Leadership Training, Recruitment and Retention, and Financial Sus- Susceptibility Software Audit and Financial Training.
Second.
Motion made by, uh, Counselor Mackin, seconded by Counselor Higgins. Counsel comment on this order? I have a comment, or I just have a question. I noticed that the grant funds need to be spent by August, so it's a short turnaround. I wondered what the plans were. I know listed, there's a lot of things that can be used for. If you just have a little more information on how you plan to use the funds? Yeah. I know there's a lot of training going on. I just want to hear more about it.
I'm Cody, Fire Chief. So our plans are for this grant money. This is actually a five-year grant. This is the first round that we'll be receiving uh, for year one. So this year, uh, for education purposes, we're looking at doing some uh, work with, uh, the community college, either in Bangor or, or in Prescott to do some licensure classes as well as, uh, some continuing education hour, uh, programs that our department, uh, has been looking for for a long time, but we just haven't been able to have the funding for it, as well as updating some of the training equipment that we have. A lot of our training equipment for the ambulance side of things are anywhere from twenty to thirty years old, so this right here will be able to help us, uh, make, uh, those improvements.
Very good. So you just said that was for five years, so you have five years to spend the thirty-four. Will you get thirty-four?
I'm working thirty-four thousand each year.
Oh, good.
Forward.
Thank you. I should have read all the fine, like, more carefully. No, that's great. That's awesome. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Counsel question? Thank you, thank you, Chief. Any rest of questions in the public? Public comment? To the.
I'm seventy-three School Street, Fire Chief. I just want to applaud John for continuing down this road. Uh, ten years ago, State of Maine started this Blue Ribbon Commission to do exactly this, and it was, I sat on some of that, and the thing about it was, it was for rural Maine. Well, guess who didn't get the money? For Maine. And I just want to thank John and you for pursuing this and, and giving us all the order that.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. We'll bring it back to the council for a vote. Counselor Pelletier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor Higgins.
Aye.
Counsel Dumeay.
Aye.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Aye.
And Chair Danforth, aye, passes six zero. Counsel Dumeay, can I have you read order number forty-nine?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Order number forty-nine dash twenty twenty-five, providing for the approval of application for entertainment license for American Legion Post eighty. It is ordered that the attached application to the entertainment license is hereby approved for Jasmine Newhouse Finance Officer, Business Address nine seventy Central Street, Millinocket, doing business as Donald V. Henry, American Legion Post eighty, nine seventy Central Street, Millinocket.
Second.
We got it tied. All right. Motion made by Counsel Dumeay, seconded by Counselor Higgins.
Very good.
Any council comment on this order? Any public comment on the order? See you none. We'll bring, bring it back for a vote. Counselor Pelletier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counsel Higgins.
Aye.
Counsel Dumeay.
Aye.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Aye.
Chair Danforth, aye, passes six zero. Counselor Higgins, can I have you read order number fifty?
Yes, Madam Chair. Order number fifty, twenty twenty-five, Providing for approval of an application for malt venus and spituous liquor license for the American Legion Post eighty. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approves the attached application for a malt venus spituous liquor license is hereby approved for Donald V. Henry, Business Address nine seventy Central Street, Millinocket, doing business as American Legion Post eighty, nine seventy, Central Street, Millinocket.
Motion made by Counselor Higgins, seconded by Counselor Mackin. Counsel comment on this order? Public comment on the order? See you none. We'll bring it back to the council for a vote. Might as well still start with you, Counsel Pelletier.
Aye.
Counsel Pelletier, how do you vote?
Aye, thanks.
Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor Higgins.
Aye.
Counsel Dumeay.
Aye.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Aye.
Chair Danforth, aye, passes six zero. Counselor McGlaughlin, can I have you read order number fifty-one?
Yikes.
Twenty twenty-five.
Certainly. Order number fifty-one dash twenty twenty-five, Providing for establishment of banking and investment services. Whereas order number forty-eight dash twenty twenty-two authorized the treasurer to establish investment in other accounts with Wells Fargo Advisors. Whereas the town established a brokerage account with Wells Fargo Advisors for the Sterns High School Sarah Jane Thompson Memorial Scholarship Fund. Whereas Wells Fargo Advisors has advised the town that it can no longer maintain the account and ask the town to transfer its funds to another entity so that the Wells Fargo account can be terminated by April first, twenty twenty-five. And whereas the town treasurer is charged with responsibility of investing all municipal funds, including reserve funds and trust funds as required by main law, the charter, and the administrative code. And whereas the deputy treasurer acts in the absence of or at the direction of the treasurer. Now, therefore, it is ordered.
Madam Chair, could, could we please take a vote to dispense if below the remaining portion of the order one through six?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Counsel Dumeay, seconded by Counselor Higgins to forego the, the rest of the reading, but we need to take a vote on that. Uh, Counsel Pelletier.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin.
Aye.
Counsel Higgins.
Aye.
Counsel Dumeay. Counsel McGlaughlin.
Aye.
Chair Danforth, aye, word. Motion passes six zero to dispense the rest of the reading. So we need a second on the order itself as it stands?
Second.
Okay, motion by Counselor McGlaughlin. It was seconded by Counsel Pelletier. Now we will go to counsel, counsel comment on the order. Is there any council comment on this order? Mr. Manager, would you like to bring a little synopsis? We're bringing this.
Yeah.
Would you please?
In, in its most basic.
Yes.
Sense, uh, you know, this funding has been around and been housed at Wells Fargo for decade. Uh, uh, it was officially brought under the town's audit authority a couple of years ago, and then, you know, what we found out in recent months was that Wells Fargo if I fell in this, uh, field. So we just now financial institution would be just, uh, you're in a strong relationship with, with Bangor Savings, most of our uh, it's actually going to be, you know, easier for us to have it in with our you know, one on, now then.
Very good. Thank you. Any public comment on this order? So back to the council for a vote. Counselor Pelletier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Mackin.
Aye.
Counsel Higgins.
Aye.
Counsel Dumeay.
Aye.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Aye.
Chair Danforth, aye, the motion passes six zero. So we now are in reports and communications, Warrant Committee for April tenth meeting, Counsel Dumeay and Counselor Higgins. Does that work for you?
As far as I'm already.
Very good. Okay.
Can you cover?
Yes, okay, we'll work, we'll work it out. All right. Um, next under-chair committee report, I will mention, uh, the next age-friendly meeting is April eighth, uh, two PM at the Labrum by Zoom, and it was nice. I saw it up on our little, our message boards, but I pulled up to come to the meeting, so we're getting the word out in multiple ways. Um, I will mention a couple of things that, um, the Age Friendly Committee is involved in, and I'm hoping you'll, uh, we're going to participate in Earth Day. We'll help, uh, clean, community cleanup. April twenty-second is Earth Day, so there's all kinds of these posted around town, um, nine to twelve. We've got a rain date. Hopefully it won't rain, uh, on Tuesday, April twenty-second, because it's Earth Day. Um, we're going to meet at the Recreation Complex. We want tons of volunteers, and then we'll kind of disperse to different, the different parks that we have in the community. Um, and then we'll meet back at, um, the ref area for, uh, hot dog or barbecue. So more information, we got plenty of time to give information out. Get to take time off. Come join us, have fun, so we'll be promoting that in our community. Also, coming back this year, we're going to have the Farmers and Ottersons Market. It's not going to be every Saturday like it was, um, we attempted last year. It will be the first Saturday of the month, July, August, September, and October. Um, and so we're just, we're getting information out about that and posters and people vendors and participants. So those are two things that age-friendly committees heavily involved in for our community, for those that weren't aware, so. Thank you. I think that's probably all we have for, uh, Chair.
Here.
Yes.
You could also mention that, uh, that other, you know, ongoing product, project of the friendly committee, community garden, uh, will be
Yeah.
possibly progress here very soon.
Yes. Yes, the community, I'm actually will.
Exactly. Chair.
I guess I've been. Oh, thank you for that reminder that I guess I've been the, I've been the lead on that in the past where people want a plot in our community garden. We will be cleaning that up on April twenty-second. Um, Earth Day as well, getting that ready again for this year. Thank you for the reminder. I did forget.
Projects that's done on Congress Streets.
Yeah.
On the Cradle Park.
Yes. Thank you. Little plug there. Appreciate that. That takes us into two-minute public comment. If there's anybody in the public that wants to come up to the, come up to the podium and speak through the chair, to the chair, the rest of the committee, I welcome you. You have name and address and.
Good evening, Town Council. My name is James Angier. I'm from Winn. I'm representing Peer-to-Peer. Um, we are going to be moving back down into Millinocket. I just wanted to introduce myself, if Peer-to-Peer, uh, to the Town Council. Um, I'll have more information to follow at a later time. This is pretty much just an introduction, uh, letting the town know that Peer-to-Peer will be moving back to Millinocket. So thank you for your time.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Uh, that Chair, um, and just to.
Mr. Manager, go ahead.
Just to follow, uh, you know, I, I had a lengthy conversation with, with James earlier this week, and uh, we do intend to have him back. You know, once budget process is over for a, uh, you know, a lengthier, you know, ten, fifteen minute kind of presentation on a project. They spend a little more time.
No, that sounds very good.
Thanks, Chair.
Yeah, we will have you back. Still, any other public comment? See you none. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Dumeay, seconded by Counsel Higgins to adjourn. All those in favor? Or how do you vote? Sorry, I gotta go. Yeah, Counsel, Counsel Pelletier.
Aye.
Aye, Counsel Mackin.
Aye.
Counsel Dumeay.
Aye.
Counsel Higgins.
Aye.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Aye.
Chair Danforth, aye, this passes six zero. We are adjourned.
Thank you and good night.
Thank you.